Meeting. Originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue in Bakersfield, California. Grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation, Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy. And our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the way they feel about government, those who manage it, and the services it provides. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors Meeting will convene momentarily.
Good morning. Boards are reconvening. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scribner.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Here.
Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, April 25th, 9:00 AM session of the Kern County Board of Supervisors. We'll begin today's meeting with a flag salute led by Mr. Tom Passick. And following the pledge of allegiance, remain standing for a moment of silence and meditation, or prayer.
Good morning. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, I'm going to call on Mr. Nick Cullen, our Director of Animal Services, to introduce our Pet of the Week. Hi, good morning, Nick. Who do we have?
Good morning Chairman Flores, members of the board. I brought with me Nene. She's snuggled up under my chin here. Nene's about an eight-year-old Chihuahua. She's a little girl. She's available for adoption right now. She's one of those dogs that's a senior girl, so we have a special place in our heart for her. But she's available for adoption right now at the Kern County Animal Shelter.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that and all the good work that you do. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll begin by considering the consent agenda. And agendas are located at the back of the chambers for anyone wishing to follow along. All items listed with the CA above the item number are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion. If a member of the audience wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item on the consent agenda, they may do so prior to a vote being taken. A member of the board may remove any item from the consent agenda, and it will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning the item before action is taken. A member of the public may also comment on any closed-session item. At this time, I will read the consent agenda items. On page two, items three and six through eight. On page three, items nine through fifteen. On page four, items sixteen through twenty-two. On page five, items twenty-three through thirty. On page six, items thirty-one through thirty-eight. On page seven, items thirty-nine through forty-four. On page eight, items forty-five through fifty-one. And on page nine, items fifty-two through fifty-four. Would any member of the public like to make comments on any of the consent agenda items? Now's the time, please come forward. Okay, seeing that, I'll bring it back to the board.
Motion on consent.
Second. Okay, motion and second. Members cast your vote.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Okay, at this time, we'll move to resolutions and proclamations. Item one is a proclamation to proclaim May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Kern County, and Supervisor Scribner will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion to approve proclamation.
Thank you. Motion and second. Members cast your vote.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Well, good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board.
The tradition of recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month began in 1949 as a unified effort to raise awareness of mental health issues and promote mental wellness for all. This May, Kern County commemorates 24 years of bringing awareness to this important issue. The theme for 2023 is "Break the Stigma." Behavioral Health and Recovery Services is making progress to increase the public's awareness of mental health issues, but there remains significant stigma attached to those who have a mental health condition. One in five individuals will be affected by a mental health condition in their lifetime. Most people diagnosed with a mental health condition can experience relief from their symptoms by reaching out for help. Unfortunately, too many people are silent about their mental health illness, and far too many wait until someone is a danger to themselves or others before they act. This May, we ask everyone in the community to take some time to consider their own views on mental illness and how it can impact your family, friends, and neighbors. And so therefore, I have Stacy Kuhwahara with me. She's our Director of Kern Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, and I'll present this proclamation to her and ask her to say a few words. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Kern, State of California, has officially proclaimed May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Kern County, and this recognition has been entered into the official Board Minutes and signed by our Honorable Chairman Jeff Flores. Stacy, come on up. Proclamation, thank you so much.
Well, thank you Supervisor Scribner, and good morning Chairman Flores and the board. I'm Stacy Kuhwahara, the Director for Kern Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, and I'm very proud to be speaking again about the events that we're planning in May to recognize Mental Health Awareness Month. Fluctuations in our mental wellness is something that we all experience. Ups and downs are just a part of life, but for some, the struggle of mental illness is much more significant. Mental illness is something that impacts all of us, whether it's our own personal struggles, that of a loved one or a family member, or how these issues are presenting in our community today. According to the National Alliance on Mental Illness, and as Supervisor Scribner shared, in 2020, 21% of adults, almost 53 million people, experienced mental illness. 5.6% of adults experienced serious mental illness, and 16% of our youth that are between the ages of six and 17 experience a mental health disorder. I suspect going forward, when we see our data and statistics for our mental health numbers here in 2023, we're going to continue to see an increased prevalence in mental illness. So recognizing and breaking the stigma around mental illness is the focus of this year's Mental Health Awareness Events. We invite the community to come together, to spread awareness for mental health issues, to support those we love who are struggling with mental illness, and I really am pleased with the events that we're doing that especially support our youth right now because we know that they are also really struggling, and reaching them and supporting them and reaching out for help is really very important. I would like you to bring, I would like to invite you to bring your awareness to mental health by participating in any of the activities we're going to be doing this month. We're going to be sharing our lime green ribbons with you. You can wear them throughout the month to celebrate. It's just an opportunity to remind us how creating mental health awareness can be as simple as just asking a question, beginning to have a conversation. I would also like to thank our county partners who are joining us to participate in some of our events for mental health awareness. Bryn Kerrigan with Public Health, Andy Sullivan with the Library, and Nick Cullen with Animal Services will all be taking part in some of our activities this year. And here to share with you what we're doing specifically is Dr. Christina Rajlal, our Mental Health Service Act Coordinator.
Thank you, Stacy. Thank you. Good morning, everybody. You know, we're very excited to kick off the month of May. Looking back at 2022 as a community, we have really had some trying times, and looking forward through 2023 as a community, I really see opportunities for us all to come together to prioritize mental health issues with the community. Everyone has mental health, and it's just as important to prioritize your mental health as it is your physical and your spiritual health. May is a chance for our community to come together, spread awareness for mental health issues, and end the stigma associated with them. It's really critical to let our community know that it is okay to acknowledge their feelings and to reach out for help if needed, and it's really imperative that we model this for our children so that they also know that it's okay to ask for help. We're super excited this May to kick off the month in our usual style, which is to light up the County Administrative Building in lime green at night, which is our signature mental health color. We would also like to invite you to wear lime green, especially every Friday, to raise awareness for mental health. We've brought a calendar of events that are open and free to the public, and we're proud this year to partner with many Kern County Departments and community-based organizations, as Stacy mentioned, Public Health, our libraries, the animal services, law enforcement, NAMI, our Kern High District, and other educational partners, COME, Clinica Sierra Vista, College Community Services, Child Guidance Center, and the Apple Core Project, and many more. Some of our signature events that we would like to invite our Board of Supervisors and the public to include our Grounded in Health pet adoption event at our 28th Street location on May 8th, coffee with our Met Team at the Adventure Awaits Coffee Shop on 19th Street on May 9th, our signature event, which is branded "Keep Calm and Be Well," which is a family-friendly event and Wellness Day at COME on May 13th, and again, that's free to the public, and our mental health movie showing of the movie Luca with a bike drawing at the Southwest Library on May 18th. You can find all of these events listed on our social media page with our handle at @kernbhrs or on our website at kernbhrs.org/community. We will also be cross-promoting other mental health-focused activities throughout the month for some of our community partners that we work with through social media, so keep a lookout for those. So we invite you in the month of May to help to bring awareness to mental health by participating in any of the events that I've mentioned and help to break the stigma that's associated with seeking mental health care. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll begin by considering the consent agenda. And agendas are located at the back of the chambers for anyone wishing to follow along. All items listed with the CA above the item number are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion. If a member of the audience wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item on the consent agenda, they may do so prior to a vote being taken. A member of the board may remove any item from the consent agenda, and it will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning the item before action is taken. A member of the public may also comment on any closed-session item. At this time, I will read the consent agenda items. On page two, items three and six through eight. On page three, items nine through 15. On page four, items 16 through 22. On page five, items 23 through 30. On page six, items 31 through 38. On page seven, items 39 through 44. On page eight, items 45 through 51. And on page nine, items 52 through 54. Would any member of the public like to make comment on any of the consent agenda items? Now's the time, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
Motion on consent.
Second.
Okay, motion second, members cast your vote.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Okay, at this time, we'll move to resolutions and proclamations. Item one is a proclamation to proclaim May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Kern County, and Supervisor Scrivener will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, motion to approve proclamation.
Thank you, motion and second, members cast your vote.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Well, good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The tradition of recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month began in 1949 as a unified effort to raise awareness of mental health issues and promote mental wellness for all. This May, Kern County commemorates 24 years of bringing awareness to this important issue. The theme for 2023 is "Break the Stigma." Behavioral Health and Recovery Services is making progress to increase the public's awareness of mental health issues, but there remains significant stigma attached to those who have a mental health condition. One in five individuals will be affected by a mental health condition in their lifetime. Most people diagnosed with a mental health condition can experience relief from their symptoms by reaching out for help. Unfortunately, too many people are silent about their mental health illness, and far too many wait until someone is a danger to themselves or others before they act. This May, we ask everyone in the community to take some time to consider their own views on mental illness and how it can impact your family, friends, and neighbors. And so therefore, I have Stacy Kuhahara with me. She's our Director of Kern Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, and I'll present this proclamation to her and ask her to say a few words. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Kern, State of California, has officially proclaimed May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Kern County, and this recognition has been entered into the official board minutes and signed by our Honorable Chairman, Jeff Flores. Stacy, come on up. Proclamation, thank you so much.
Well, thank you Supervisor Scrivener, and good morning Chairman Flores and the board. I'm Stacy Kuhahara, the Director for Kern Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, and I'm very proud to be speaking again about the events that we're planning in May to recognize Mental Health Awareness Month. Fluctuations in our mental wellness is something that we all experience. Ups and downs are just a part of life, but for some, the struggle of mental illness is much more significant. Mental illness is something that impacts all of us, whether it's our own personal struggles, that of a loved one or a family member, or how these issues are presenting in our community today. According to the National Alliance on Mental Illness, and as Supervisor Scrivener shared in 2020, 21% of adults, almost 53 million people, experienced mental illness. 5.6% of adults experienced serious mental illness, and 16% of our youth that are between the ages of six and 17 experience a mental health disorder. I suspect going forward, when we see our data and statistics for our mental health numbers here in 2023, we're going to continue to see an increased prevalence in mental illness. So recognizing and breaking the stigma around mental illness is the focus of this year's Mental Health Awareness Events. We invite the community to come together, to spread awareness for mental health issues, to support those we love who are struggling with mental illness, and I really am pleased with the events that we're doing that especially support our youth right now because we know that they are also really struggling, and reaching them and supporting them and reaching out for help is really very important. I would like you to bring, I would like to invite you to bring your awareness to mental health by participating in any of the activities we're going to be doing this month. We're going to be sharing our lime green ribbons with you. You can wear them throughout the month to celebrate. It's just an opportunity to remind us how creating mental health awareness can be as simple as just asking a question, beginning to have a conversation. I would also like to thank our county partners who are joining us to participate in some of our events for mental health awareness. Bryn Kerrigan with Public Health, Andy Sullivan with the Library, and Nick Cullen with Animal Services will all be taking part in some of our activities this year. And here to share with you what we're doing specifically is Dr. Christina Rajlal, our Mental Health Service Act Coordinator.
Thank you, Stacy, thank you, good morning, everybody. You know, we're very excited to kick off the month of May. Looking back at 2022 as a community, we have really had some trying times, and looking forward through 2023 as a community, I really see opportunities for us all to come together to prioritize mental health issues with the community. Everyone has mental health, and it's just as important to prioritize your mental health as it is your physical and your spiritual health. May is a chance for our community to come together, spread awareness for mental health issues, and end the stigma associated with them. It's really critical to let our community know that it is okay to acknowledge their feelings and to reach out for help if needed, and it's really imperative that we model this for our children so that they also know that it's okay to ask for help. We're super excited this May to kick off the month in our usual style, which is to light up the county administrative building in lime green at night, which is our signature mental health color. We would also like to invite you to wear lime green, especially every Friday, to raise awareness for mental health. We've brought a calendar of events that were, that are open and free to the public, and we're proud this year to partner with many Kern County departments and community-based organizations, as Stacy mentioned, Public Health, our libraries, the animal services, law enforcement, NAMI, our Kern High District, and other educational partners, COME, Clinica Sierra Vista, College Community Services, Child Guidance Center, and the Apple Core Project, and many more. Some of our signature events that we would like to invite our Board of Supervisors and the public to include our Grounded in Health Pet Adoption Event at our 28th Street location on May 8th, Coffee with our Met Team at the Adventure Awaits Coffee Shop on 19th Street on May 9th, our signature event, which is branded Keep Calm and Be Well, which is a family-friendly event and Wellness Day at COME on May 13th, and again, that's free to the public, and our mental health movie showing of the movie Luca with a bike drawing at the Southwest Library on May 18th. You can find all of these events listed on our social media page with our handle at KernBHRS, or on our website at kernbhrs.org/community. We will also be cross-promoting other mental health-focused activities throughout the month for some of our community partners that we work with through social media, so keep a lookout for those. So we invite you in the month of May to help to bring awareness to mental health by participating in any of the events that I've mentioned, and help to break the stigma that's associated with seeking mental health care. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, moving, moving along to item two. This is a, this is a proclamation to proclaim May 2nd, 2023, as Giving Day in Kern County to encourage local giving through the annual fundraiser Give Big Kern, and Supervisor Peters will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, members cast your vote.
Motion is approved, all eyes.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. I believe Aaron Falk from the Kern Community Foundation is supposed to be joining me down here, but I'm not seeing him down here right now, so I'll just go ahead and say that Giving Day in Kern County is meant to encourage local giving through the annual fundraiser Give Big Kern. Give Big Kern is a nonprofit strengthening initiative of the Kern Community Foundation, 501(c)(3) charitable organization whose mission is growing community, growing philanthropy. As we all know, Kern County is hands-down one of the most generous places out there, and in 2022, they set a record-breaking $885,000 in donations from 200, excuse me, 2,398 individual donors going to 132 local nonprofits just through this one initiative. So this is really an outstanding thing for our local nonprofit organizations, and I commend Kern Community Foundation for that. And with that, I will, on behalf of the board, proclaim May 2nd, 2023, as Giving Day in Kern County, and will be happy to present that to you at a later date.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're moving on to item four. No, item four, public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the board on any matter, not on this agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the board. Board members respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. They may ask a question for clarification, make a referral to staff for factual information, or request staff to report back to the board at a later meeting. Also, the board may take action to direct staff to place a matter of business on a future agenda. Speakers are limited to two minutes. Please state and spell your name before making your presentation. Thank you. Any, any public comment, make a way forward. I see one, come on down. Welcome.
Jose Lopez, J-O-S-E-L-O-P-E-Z, interim director for Kern County Veteran Service Department. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Madam Clerk, Mr. Alsop. I wanted to take a moment just to highlight the department's hard work. We're a small team, but we have big responsibilities, and we'll reach all corners of Kern County. In an effort to continue to provide additional services to Kern County, I wanted to make your board and the community aware of the Kern County Veterans Resource and Job Fair celebrating our heroes will be hosting on Thursday, May 25th, at the Kern County Veteran Service Department from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and this is an event for all veterans, spouses, and their dependents.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lopez, for your advocacy and for the collateral and the posters that you shared with us.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, any other public comments before we move on? Okay, seeing none, moving on to board member announcements or reports. Yeah, Supervisor Peters.
Thank you, Chairman. As most of you know, we've had with the flooding, we've seen with the rain, a lot of, a lot of damage, and a lot of emergency situations throughout Kern County. Right now, thanks to a lot of our county departments that are represented here today, that damage has been mitigated compared to what it could have been, but there were still some significant impacts out there, especially in communities throughout the First District as well as through, throughout Chairman, or excuse me, Supervisor Couch's district. A lot of the residents there have been impacted, and fortunately, we've had some help come from some external organizations as well that are bringing relief to residents, especially in our mountain communities and our communities in northern part of Kern County. And I wanted to give them a chance to share a little bit about the efforts that they're making and what, what opportunities they have available for residents that have been impacted. So I would like to ask Mr. Todd Hous from FEMA, as well as Ms. Mary Ann Bradfield from the Small Business Administration, would, would just share some thoughts.
Welcome, good morning.
Thank you Supervisor Peters. Chairman, members of the board, my name's Todd Hous, I'm with Intergovernmental Affairs, FEMA. We're here at the request of the Governor, the declaration that was on April 3rd for an incident period from the floods that occurred from the 21st of February, and they are continuing. Kern County was designated for Individual Assistance and Public Assistance, Disaster Unemployment, and DSNAP, which you call CalFresh. We have disaster recovery centers to help individuals with federal, county, and state partners that are assisting individuals in registration as well as recovery in Lake Isabella and McFarland. We have mobile registration centers that are just assisting people in the more rural areas, and that would be in Shafto. It's actually next to the True Value, not a plug for True Value. Our assistance is for homeowners and renters, for people who are uninsured or underinsured. And so we would encourage folks that have incurred some kind of a loss or damage as a result of the floods, inline winds, snow, ice, to register with FEMA, to look into assistance. Now, we're not a, we're not in place of insurance. It's more a seed money to help you get back on your feet, but we would encourage you to reach out to those communities in those areas that are possibly less trusting of the government, have mobility issues, have language issues, and share those details with your emergency manager and with FEMA. And we have teams that actually go boots on the ground and to their homes, knock on the doors, and help them get registered for assistance. I think short of any questions, I would say that registration with FEMA is at 800-621-3362, or disasterassistance.gov. I've been communicating with you via email with some of our products. Please feel free to reach out to us. I am happy to answer any questions you have about FEMA or the assistance we provide.
Supervisor.
I just wanted you to repeat the phone number again, if you would.
Supervisor Perez.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Flores, and I want to thank you profoundly from the bottom of my heart for being here, and ask you to please express our gratitude to the Governor and his team for that decision-making process. Kern County is way too important, you know, in the larger scale of the fourth-largest economy in the world, to treat as if, you know, we can wait or not prioritize. It's simply the truth, and we appreciate the Governor's recognition of that through action, through you being here, you know, and I just want to say thank you, and if you could express that to the Governor and his team, we'd really appreciate it. I know Supervisor Peters, who's been flying all over the country, he's been banging on doors, he's been talking to everybody, because I know how devoted and desperate we are to ensure that we're making progress here. It's pretty scary, and not over, as you know, but really, you are so welcome here, you are so appreciated here. Thank you from the bottom of my heart. Please express that to the Governor.
Thank you, it's our honor to serve the people of Kern County. I would introduce my partner, Mary Ann, with the SBA.
Morning, welcome.
Good morning, my name is Mary Ann Bradfield. I'm a Public Information Officer with the U.S. Small Business Administration Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience. I want to thank Supervisor Peters for inviting us, and for all of you for having us. And most people think of the SBA as just small business. You might be surprised to know that in the case of a disaster, we help homeowners, renters, businesses of all sizes, and private nonprofits in terms of physical damage and property damage assistance through low-interest loans. And for small businesses and private nonprofits, we have something called an economic injury loan, which means for lost revenues, until they can get back on their feet, we can help them with some, a low-interest loan for operational costs. For homeowners, renters, and nonprofits, it's as low as 2.375% interest, and for businesses, as low as 4%. We go 15 to 30 years, we make it as affordable as possible. Our mandate is to help make loans. This is for uninsured or uncompensated losses, so what insurance and, say FEMA, don't cover, we can help them with those loans. And I want to point out that if FEMA refers an applicant, one of their applicants to SBA, they must apply, and they may say, oh, I don't want a loan, I'm not going to apply. But if they don't, then the process stops. So if they come to us, they apply, and they don't qualify for a loan, they simply don't have the income or whatever to afford it, we can then, in most cases, send them back to FEMA to be considered for more resources in another kind of pot of money. But if they don't apply, they can't be eligible for that. The other thing I want to point out is, in this case, for this particular disaster, the first 12 months, the payments are deferred, and there is no interest occurring during that 12 months. So essentially, it's 12 months interest-free, and there's no prepayment penalty. So some of your folks may simply need what I would call a bridge loan, but if they don't apply, they don't have that option. And so if you apply by June 2nd for physical damage, you have until January to, for the economic injury, and I know I'm going over time, sorry, but I would encourage everybody to come to either the Lake Isabella or the McFarland Disaster Recovery Centers where we have people on ground to help, along with FEMA and other state and county agencies. So thank you, and any questions?
Supervisor Couch.
Thank you. I think, I understand that people have to apply, sort of be turned down so they can go back and maybe apply for a different revenue or source of funds. Is there a single point of contact, do they, or is that what you just described, going into the office, or the 800 number, either one is the first step?
Well, you can do it either way. You can go online at disasterloanassistance.sba.gov, or, and there is an 800 number, and all of a sudden, my brain went blank, and I'll get it to you.
The same one that?
No, it's a different one. We are technically a separate agency, even though we're partners in disaster.
So where should somebody start?
I would go to disasterloanassistance.sba.gov, or personally, I would go to that disaster recovery center because you can stop at FEMA first, get your registration, your FEMA registration number, you can go straight to SBA, and then they have all kinds of other services there. For instance, let's say my, my driver's license was lost in the flood. There's somebody there who can help them get that, and they may need that, or the tax services are there. They can help them get that information, and if you're a business, you're going to need that for your SBA application. So if it were me, my first stop would be that disaster recovery center.
Okay, thank you.
Does that help?
Very much, thank you.
Supervisor Peters.
Thank you, Chairman. Not to put you on the spot, Mary Ann, but one thing Mary Ann has in common with a lot of people from Bakersfield is she's actually from Oklahoma, and so I just wanted to say especially thank you for being out here, and thank you also, Mr. Hous, and, you know, people just absolutely appreciate everything you guys are doing. It's sorely needed, and I got to go up and tour the recovery center yesterday and saw all the great programs that are going up there, all the help that's being offered by, by your organizations, as well as some of our county organizations. I know Stacy Kuhahara is here, and her mental health team, Bryn Kerrigan's team from Department of Public Health, there's a lot of, a lot of great folks up there providing some sorely needed resources, so I appreciate everything you guys are doing, and just know that the county does as well.
It is truly our pleasure to serve this county, and thank you very much. And I will be sending everybody my information via email and some additional documentation, and I will also leave some printed materials in Supervisor Peters' office so that you can get those. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Scrivener.
Sorry, excuse me, I have one more question for you.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, sorry.
No, that's okay.
First of all, thank you for being here, we appreciate it. Farmers and ranchers are a big, big important sector, employment sector, business sector in Kern County, and so what's the process for them?
If they are an agricultural producer, their first stop is USDA. Those programs, by law, we cannot offer the same programs USDA does, and we can't make loans to the producers themselves. However, if they're an auxiliary business, maybe a supplier, even if, even if the producer themselves owns that second business, as long as it's separate, we can help them with those loans. There are some exceptions, small agricultural co-ops, we can help Aqua businesses, we can assist, and nurseries, if under 50% of their revenues are actually from the sale of the plants, because some of them make a lot of their revenues from the garden supplies and other pots and tools, then we can also help them. It really all depends, so if there's a question, I would encourage them to take their tax returns down to see our experts at one of those disaster recovery centers. We also have a business recovery center in Visalia, which is just for SBA, at the Web Board, Workforce Investment Board on Main Street there, and those experts can look at those tax returns and help guide them to see if there is anything within their business structure that we can't help. Our, our job is to try to make loans, not to say no.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Scrivener, and thank you to, thank you to our emergency responders for the, for the overview of assistance available, and thank you Supervisor Peters for your leadership on this issue as we continue to navigate moving forward. Okay, at this time, having no more items to consider.
Excuse me, Jeff, I apologize, I, I wanted to, wanted to mention something under board member announcements or reports, I didn't punch in, so I apologize. I, I read today that Larry Hallam, who was a longtime educator at Arvin High School, passed away. Probably some of us participated in his We the People classes, we, I'd been invited to speak multiple times to that, to his classes, and so, so Larry, he taught civics, U.S. History, Geography, Government, Economics, very important courses that maybe these days are not getting the attention that they deserve, but Larry was just a wonderful educator. He's also a tennis coach, I didn't know that, so that's something for Supervisor Couch, you probably did know that, that he was, and so just a wonderful gentleman, really loved the kids, loved Arvin High, and I saw that, and I just would ask that we would adjourn this morning's meeting in his memory, because he was really a wonderful member of our community. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor Scrivener for honoring one of Kern County's best. Will adjourn in his memory. Okay, having no more items to consider, we're going to move to closed session to hear items under County Council, items 55, 56, and 57. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.